To the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, one God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Orders of the day, first orders, public hearing, local law amendment of zoning law regarding manufactured homes. We have a motion to open that public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second it?
I'll say it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And at the same time, well first, does anybody have any comments on the manufactured homes? All right, let's open the second public hearing, local law amendment of zoning law regarding smoke shops, tobacco stores, a motion to open that public hearing.
I'll make that motion, open that.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any comments on the smoke shops? Not, we'll leave that open, leave the manufactured homes open for a while. Do we have approval of the August 18th regular board minutes?
No, I don't have any conditions or corrections, I would make a motion that we approved in minutes from the 18th meeting.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of vouchers.
General fund, sixty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Sewer fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars and forty-seven cents. Capital, one hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred twelve dollars and twenty-three cents. Water, ninety-three thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and three cents. They've been audited, I approve that they be approved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project.
Yep, so to update the board, on Five Streets Highlander has finished topping the remaining portions of Trinity Ave. Painting and striping was completed on the streets. Really the major, only major big ticket item remaining is street signage they need to put up. What I understand, they should be out there tomorrow to do that. We still need to finalize the pay application and the changeover with them. We haven't been able to finalize that with them yet. That's all I got for Five Street Show.
I have a question. Are we, would we be satisfied at this point with Trinity Ave?
Yep.
We are?
Pretty sure we are.
Well, I'll bring up a point too, Dan, I had a citizen approach me.
Same one I did.
Okay, and he isn't really happy with these, says there's still water puddles after rain and...
There's one down there today.
So what do we do about it?
Well, there's, I'm not gonna say you're gonna eliminate every single water puddle, because I drove down Park today and I know what's going on lower in Park.
What we did on Trinity is...
So you're talking Trinity, I think?
No. No, Trinity. Yes, because I've talked to that same person.
Between Lanfer and Shark Street.
What we did is, we took the worst sections and that, that was keeping the water in the road, in the driving lanes. We took those sections and redid them. The other sections, the water is pounding on the curbs and whatnot. It was more of a, what would you say Kevin? Compromise with Highlander?
Yes, when my deal with the devil.
Yeah.
We definitely tried to pinpoint the worst areas of Trinity. It was a tricky road to deal with, especially with the railroad there and the changes that were needed to accommodate the railroad. We, it's an extremely flat road to begin with, it wasn't gonna be a perfect fix unless we, we really made them tear up the entirety of the road. The village wanted to, I don't wanna speak to you guys, they wanted to get it erect up and get the road ready to be used. And so, we feel that if we had pushed to have to redo the whole street, we probably wouldn't even be finished this year. So...
Do we have other, this one citizen, do we have any other citizens that have raised concerns?
I have not heard of any, except for the one citizen.
This is the first I've heard it tonight.
Well, we just, it just happened, the person who said the home was like a day ago.
Well, there is one spot down there we're planning on, we're gonna address.
Yes.
Kinda kinda cuts in, we've got a solution for that with water comes to puddle.
Joe and I walked through it with the superintendent from Highlander this spring and basically took the worst spots. Yes, I'm not in agreement that it is 100%, but...
When did you talk with this citizen, Paul, just recently also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and was he satisfied with your remarks?
You know that citizen, so...
Okay.
No.
Do you recommend that we approve these streets as they are now?
I do.
I guess that's my question, is it something that's gonna be an issue down the road?
Um...
Any maintenance or anything like that?
If we were to, like, say we're to mill that and pave it up, say it's one of our lists, on our list, five years down the road, whatever, some things we could...
We can correct the problem.
Okay.
And that's, that was kind of my thought.
Okay.
Well, I told that gentleman I'd bring it up to the meeting, I did, so I did. Do we need a motion to approve the work?
No. We don't even have the payoffs to finalize.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Paul.
It's just basically a status report of where we are with the projects.
I would have better missed it, please not to bring it up myself. Thank you.
Any other questions on Five Streets before we move on? All right, we'll move on to phase two wastewater treatment plan upgrades. Got the bid results.
Yeah, Joe, I just wanted to pass around for everybody on the board, because it's all's...
Yes, okay.
You guys, you guys have a copy of this?
I have that copy.
Are you ready, have you checked all the insurance, you're ready for us to award the piece tonight?
Uh, the, so the assurance comes in after the notice of award. We, the paperwork we received from their bid is sufficient for both American Process Group and for ENI Mechanical to award the bid tonight. So we, we would suggest the board to award the bid to those two contractors.
But we won't be awarded notice of proceed, do you get rest of insurance?
That's correct, so once we get the insurance and bonds in, that's usually a month process, so we would typically do that at the next board meeting, sign the agreement and the notice of proceed that is...
So, do we really want to do anything tonight, or do it all at once?
Yes, you should do the notice of award tonight.
We should, we should go.
They're gonna give you the insurance and other things, I tell you.
Yeah, sometimes that's included as part of the budget.
So we would need a motion to accept American Process Group bid for three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, total base bid, with an alternative of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars.
So Joe, what I understand, you guys aren't gonna accept that, correct?
So I think basically three million, two hundred...
So it's just the base bid you're accepting?
We need a motion to accept that one. This, that is basically the major lagoon work, the desludgeing, the new liner.
And we did bid that with our first bid and...
This came in a quid's million dollars less?
Million dollars less.
By rebidding it?
Yep.
And it's about where we figured it...
Should be?
Should be, okay.
Yeah, I should note that with the bond resolution you guys have right now and with the way the bids came in, we don't anticipate you guys having to alter that bond resolution to meet these costs.
I'll make the motion that we accept the base bid of three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars with American Process Group.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then the second bid is on the mechanical end of it, and that's through ENI Mechanical. For total work, the mechanical work are twenty-one thousand. I gotta back up a minute, but we got the motion.
But did we vote on that, I'm sorry.
An American Process, Danny made the motion, we have a, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Now we'll move on to ENI Mechanical. For the mechanical workers, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars, we need a motion to approve their bid also.
I'll make the motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One thing, American Process Group, that's got the lagoon work, by moving forward with this, it's gonna give them a chance to get the material that they're gonna need ordered, and that could be a long time coming, the way materials are right now, so it gives us a little jump, so hopefully we'll have everything you need in the spring.
Joe, can I ask Kevin to give me a total of the project outbreaks out between the contractors, I'd like to check against the address.
Yes, we have a forum meeting, I'll forward that.
Perfect, thanks.
Mayor, something we maybe didn't do, should do is introduce Sergeant Clerk Danielle St. Louis. So those who haven't met Danielle, she, she will be taking Pam's place. We interviewed her personnel committee, recommended her unanimously approved, she's on board with us. She done it earlier, sorry.
What do you want to do? Moving on, groundwater well development project.
Joe, just real quick, back to the wastewater, I just wanted to let the board know, there was a payoff tonight for SC Spencer, for the electrical...
Yeah, that was on our cap.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was in there.
That's on our cap.
I just wanted to update you guys, let you know, the electrical guys wanna begin some of the site work this fall, and the general contractors also beginning to move forward with some of their plans. They wanna begin work on the blower building upgrades, which they plan to do later this winter as well. The lagoon guys probably won't begin until the spring of 2022, but like you were saying, Joe, by getting this motion now, they can begin ordering the line of materials, so that's a long, long lead item, so it's good to get them moving on that.
But especially with, with our ground process, we have to have somebody start this year.
Correct.
Yeah, some work started here by the end of December, so...
Correct, yep. That's all I had for wastewater, Sergeant Joe.
Do you have anything on the groundwater development project? I have one thing here, but I didn't do anything extra.
I do have a couple things, yep. I just wanted to update the board, we, we gained site plan approval through the town agreement on Monday night. Tonight, after this meeting, is the town of Watson meeting, where they'll be voting on site plan approval there. We made a submission out to New York State DOH back in August for the new water infrastructure, and we're finishing up a submission to the DEC for the updating the water supply permits. I just wanted to know, and I was talking to the municipal board about this last night, Jay Billings completed, recently completed a, excuse me, a water resources study for the overall watershed that the village owns out in, out in Watson. And he concluded that the lands can withstand 2.4 million gallons a day withdrawal rate. So right now, you're only permitted to withdraw 1.6 million gallons a day. And so, we're going to be writing the new water supply application to request 2.4 million gallons a day. The village already has infrastructure in place with the wells now, they're going to have infrastructure in place with the wells now, to be able to treat that much water and to be able to distribute that much water, so it's just a matter of being allowed to withdraw that much water right now. So we hope that will help alleviate some of the issues the village's been having with their water tank being low.
Is that conservative estimate, Kevin, or is that an aggressive estimate?
I would say it's fairly aggressive. We were planning on trying to go for around 2.0 million gallons a day, so if we're, if we are able to get as high as 2.4, that, that would be a big land for the village.
Is that, I guess my question is, is that a fair assessment of the watershed?
I, yeah.
I mean, I mean, is it gonna be able to handle that? When I say aggressive, I, I don't mean in terms of the 2.4, I mean in terms of, are we going to complete, is it gonna be days where...
No.
That's, okay.
So the, yeah, it's, it's not, obviously not, you're not gonna suck the, suck the ground dry, there's still gonna be enough water for the, you know, the environment that's needed there, right?
Because those, those springs also feed creeks that have trout stuck in them so deep, or Jay Billings has to look at that, at what they're gonna draw down, because that's another reason DEC has to provide us.
The reason I'm a little gun shy is, when we put the plant together back in the late 1990s, we were told that the plant would easily be able to handle 1.5, now I know that's not a water issue, it became a plan issue. So this is, I wanna make sure that not only do we, can we handle it plant wise, that our watershed's gonna handle it, I felt like the answer, but I wanna hear...
But we're gonna have two plans up there, with the wells and the others, I mean, we're gonna...
Right, I just wanna make sure that we don't say, jeez, now we can't handle the water we said we could handle, or, not handle, the water that we said we could get.
Yeah.
Okay.
Between the PAU unit and the new wells, you're gonna be able to handle the 2.4.
Plus you gotta figure with the ground wells, you're gonna have a cleaner water, so you're gonna have less filtering.
And if we can get a higher amount from the DEC, it's gonna give them that much more breathing room down the road.
I don't wanna be accused of a village just not knowing what we're doing, if you know, going with that.
Well, we, in the preliminary plans with GIMO, we oversized the pipe that's gonna come from the wells for future development.
Yeah, we've sized the piping in the building and everything, the pumps, everything up there, sized, so even once we get these wells online, we get our feet back under us, things calm down, we wanna develop two more wells up there, the infrastructure's gonna be there, we won't have to worry about repiping or anything, so...
So our ultimate goal is to go with all groundwater water.
Anything else on that, Kevin?
Um, I was just gonna say, we should be able to get that, I think Paul, you got me that info I needed, so we should be able to get that water supply permit out this week. And the hope is to have this project out to bid in November, December time, so that it can begin in the spring. And that's all I got for groundwater, Joe.
The thing I got is, and everybody should have a copy of it, Groundwater Well Development Project Proposed Amendment, Amendmental Solutions Agreement, everybody's had a chance to read it over, it's their contract, because there's been changes on the well project. An amended amount increase, total estimate fee, they wanna increase by $7,000. I had a phone conversation with Jeff yesterday afternoon, because yes, I realize a lot of this stuff's been going on, but I thought the pricing was a little bit on the high side, so I asked him to relook at it, and I gave him a suggestion, and, so that fee now is gonna be $5,000, not seven. So that's what I'm asking the board to authorize, motion to revise this contract for the amount of $5,000, not seven.
So what?
I didn't get a chance to print out, no one, because I just got that just before the board meeting here tonight, but...
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
But we did save a little bit of money.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Street lighting conversion program.
Hey, Joe, sorry, before you guys move on, there's just one more thing I wanted to bring up. I talked to the municipal board about this last night, but I had planned on relooking at the water sewer rates with them next, at next month's municipal board meeting, now that we have finalized numbers for the wastewater plant, and now that we have, now that it's been a slight increase to the groundwater budget, especially with, you know, flows from some of the bigger industrial users changing, I think it's a good time to revisit the water sewer rates, to make sure you guys are still okay with the rates you have right now. So I had planned on doing a presentation at the next municipal board meeting on that.
You're still planning on wanting to do that the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, because then we discussed some numbers this morning, too.
Yep.
And basically what that is, he does a nice spreadsheet, and he can also, if we wanna change the numbers, he can change them, we can see what the results would be. All right, street, LED street lighting. Basically where we're at there, I think Danielle, Pam, myself, the last few days, back and forth with National Grid, NIMR Insurance, we're good with our letter of credit, National Grid has approved that, very okay, but there was like four words in a, one sentence in our insurance, that we've been going back and forth on that National Grid wanted removed, and I think as of about 3 o'clock this afternoon, NIMR has agreed to remove them, and has sent that word on to National Grid, now we're just working here with National Grid, if they're happy now, we should be ready to close.
And we have to close by the 20th, which is on Monday.
That, the wording is what was on the cert, certificate of insurance?
Mm-hmm, that like last little line, it was literally like six little words, it was something to do with the primary and non-contributory...
But it's been back and forth, and NIMR ended up taking it to their top level people to get answers before that removes, so...
I'm surprised they agree.
Because the big thing is, if we don't get this started here in October, it looks like we won't get it done this year, and we stand a chance of losing out on the shared services, am I right?
Correct.
Let's get it done.
I'll be there tomorrow.
So that's, do you have any other comments on it? Last I saw was a little after 3, I saw that last evening.
Yeah, I haven't gotten anything since, hopefully maybe tomorrow I'll follow up again and see, they know that there's a deadline, they should get us an answer pretty quick, but...
I think now they'll move on, move on, that they've agreed to take that out, so...
Yeah, she said that was the only thing holding it up, so...
The next two, local law on manufactured home, smoke shops, we'll leave that public hearing open for a little while, move on to rezoning of industrial zone options.
I gave everybody a copy of this, it's actually the same thing I sent you before, we really haven't done much on this, because, well, the one thing we've been working on with DRI bracket, like steady for last month here, but basically if you read this over, I think the, the plan, or the design would be to change the industrial zone to two different zones, and you can read through this. The railroad corridor would change probably to the industrial zone two, or light industrial, and then the areas where Craft, R, and AMF, and Nina, that area would still be heavy industrial. I think, I think the thing is that they don't perceive any heavy or large industrial ever coming into the railroad corridor zone there, because it's not big enough for one thing. So to change it to a light industrial would open up a lot of small manufacturing and stuff like that, the capacity going to that area. And we've already changed the definitions already, so that's where we're at on that, we just haven't, I talked to Cassandra today, and we're gonna look at it again here, once the DRI gets done, which actually that application went in today.
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
And I don't know, did she send you the, the application?
Yes, I just had that chance to print out.
I looked at it a little bit, but it looks really good.
Results of the video they did was really good.
The video, and usually if it's awarded, it's awarded in November, but this year it's behind about two months, so she's not sure when the actual award will come out. And you know, I guess the chance that Lava would get the award, there'd certainly be specific committees and such that would, that would have to be set up in the spring, basically, because the money wouldn't actually come till next year, but...
Oh, no, did I, did you mistake? Yeah, we're in.
What's that?
No, we're good.
John?
That was Cassandra right there.
Was it? Yeah. I was just gonna, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, we should really commend her when you see her, because she spent a lot of time on this thing, and I don't mean during the day, I mean after hours, a lot of time.
She's a lot, of course, she's...
Paul Thayo, come to fruitation.
What I plan on doing with that is, as soon as I can get it printed out, I'll leave a copy in the office there, and then people can just look through it, I'll leave a link there for...
I can actually forward it to everybody, because she sent an email, so, and then the video's right on there, so I can forward it to everybody. They did a nice job.
I was trying to forward it from my home computer, and it was kicking back saving files, did they?
Yeah, it's, it took a while, I forwarded it to somebody, it takes a while to get it to me.
So do you want Mark to book this over and come up with his opinion?
He can, uh, I think it's a little premature.
What you wanna do is not a legal question, that's a board question.
I think it's a little premature for anybody to really look at it.
I don't think you need me drafting until you've qualified your ideas, I'm waiting.
No, I'm waiting, there's some work to do on it yet, so...
There was none, so I guess we don't have to do anything.
Mayor, I don't know if this can be, are we done with G, I just don't wanna discuss?
Twenty something minutes.
Are we done with G on our unfinished business?
Yes, we don't.
Okay, I don't know if this would follow our unfinished business, but our summer concerts are over, I think they went over well, and with the board's permission, I would like to pursue grants for next year to do things kinda on the same corridor that we did, not change much at all, have them on a Tuesday night, and see what we can do, there, there might be a couple of clear differences, the fire department might get someone involved next year with maybe a barbecue or two, and opening the fire department for kids to see the trucks a couple of times. Unless anybody has any objections, I would be glad to pursue that again for next year.
Everything went through this, huh?
I think you did a heck of a job, Dan.
It wasn't, it wasn't, I have one, Sandra Bill got us the grant, Ryan Trainer helped line up the bands, and was the MC, and there really wasn't a whole lot to it, I think it was easy to do, so I'd be glad to do it again.
Well received.
I think it was, yes.
I think the weather was pretty good, they published up any...
We had a couple nights of...
Do I need a motion?
No, so, no, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't stepping on any toes.
Okay, the next one is, seeing how our large industrial users are, been using a lot of water lately, we're looking at proposed water surcharge for industrial accounts. Ran this by the municipal board last night, and they're all in favor of it, hopefully everybody's got a copy. This is gonna be your weekly consumption surcharge, an interview daily surcharge they have. Municipal board would like to see this implemented by November 1st. Talked with Joe Russell, he feels we should do a resolution on it in a public hearing.
Uh, local wise.
Local law.
Put it into our law.
That gives us, basically if you look at our local law, it pretty much says we That gives us, basically, if you look at our local law, it pretty much says we have the right to address these rates and fees, but Joe thinks we should have a local law that explains it a little clearer, so.
Well, give it a few more teeth to it for enforcement.
So the thought is to have Mark go ahead and draw up the local law, schedule a public hearing for October, and hopefully we can adopt it in October, instead of being able to put it in force by November first, so.
Their total meeting is the twentieth, so we'd have the public hearing at five o'clock on the twentieth. So four, four, I'm sorry. I was hoping it was five.
So if that works for everybody, and everybody agrees to this.
The only ask Paul was, how does this relate to how we used to charge? And he said we used to charge by discharge.
No, no.
We have a surcharge for our sewers. We've never had one for water. It was talked about, from what I understand, years ago, but it never got into a, with our recent.
This is above the normal water ramps, industrial.
Right. With our recent issues, we thought it would be.
Apply to then?
Yes.
And they're already aware this is coming, because we've already met with them. We came back and we made some changes on this, talked with our water operators and everybody. That's where we came up with these.
And end of last night in the municipal board meeting, they drew the distinction between industrial and commercial, correct?
Yep.
What's their usual average?
They've been running about nine fifty, haven't they? A year ago, and now they're way over that.
Originally, we were told that they were going to use seven hundred and fifty to hit one hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. And they do hit that mark on the weekends, say on Saturday when they're shut down somewhat, and then on Sunday, and then Monday it ramps right back up. Usually by Tuesday, they're up over a minute.
So they could, I'd say, nine hundred thousand dollar weekly, nine hundred thousand gallon weekly average, how many times could they hit that on a, on a average, you know, just run an average? Are they hitting that point right now?
They have, in the past.
If they put a silo of, would that alleviate some of their, some of the problems for all of us?
Well, that's what we suggested.
This, this all came about in 2017, eighteen. The DOH gave us suggestions on what we should do moving forward with our industrial users. And it just got put to the side. Well, there's a new gentleman in Albany with the DOH, and he brought it to our attention, which I wasn't aware of. So the department health wants us to act on it. So right now, we have a protocol that we're going to go by. We'll get this implemented, so that'll take care of two of them, two of their concerns. The other was, I believe it was groundwater exploration, which we've already started. We're hopefully going to get that online by next spring. So we're moving ahead.
So they need to be aware, our industrial users, that this is something that the DOH said we've got to do.
They are. Joe and I and Joe's there sat down with Craft last Wednesday and had a meeting with them. So they're a hundred percent aware of everything.
They even have copies of the emails that we got from the department of health.
Good. So with that meeting, kind of like with the five streets you were talking about, Paul, I'm sure nobody's thrilled with that, but if you have a good deal, usually neither party's all that happy with it. Anyway, are they okay with the numbers? I mean, are they?
Um.
I don't, okay maybe isn't the right phrase.
Yeah. Like, like Joe said, we came back, I just had, I had made up a preliminary chart, and we came back after we had talked with them, we sat back down, and we looked at some other issue, or we looked at some, some of our surcharges for the sewer, and we kind of based things on that, you know, so. We still have to get back to Craft with this, our final, our final whatever.
The way I always understood, there was a long, Kevin, I think, I'm sure Kevin was there, a long while when we were first kind of having issues, and I remember the meeting with the spreadsheets or whatever, explaining it, and it was, the way I understood it, you know, there's a certain threshold where we'd like to have them use a certain amount. If they keep within a certain range, it's great, because we want them to use a certain amount, but not too much to tax everything, so. I just.
The other problem is, this might probably bring them to the table that, okay, now do have to do something, because they've been telling us for years, we're going to recycle this, we're going to do this, and it never turns out. So as far as the village, all the money we've, and that's another thing, we've spent a lot of money in the last three weeks over this little issue with them. We've had extra help on, we've been paying time and a half on weekends, because we were out one weekend looking for water leaks, which we didn't have, because they were going around and down. So, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't feel sorry for Craft times, you know, this is something that I feel that the board needs to implement.
Like Joe said, with our, with our low water levels, obviously, you probably heard me on the news on TV and everywhere, what I did is, each weekend, for the last three weekends, we've had at least two guys up at the water plant, myself included, cleaning filter beds. Now we can clean one filter bed at a time. We did it on the weekends, because usually, like I said, late Saturday, Sunday, their flows are down. I wanted to get the, our three million gallon tank off, because at one point it was just below nine feet. So when you take that one filter off, you can't produce as much water. But instead of waiting until we got that tank all the way to eighteen feet, we decided that we're going to start it right now, and we're going to clean one filter bed one weekend. So for the last three weekends, we've cleaned three of them. This weekend, we're going to clean another one. And that's why I left the warning, or no, I left the watch on. Instead of taking it off at, anything above fourteen feet, I can take the restrictions off. But I wanted to leave that on, just so people are a little more conscious of using water and whatnot, until we can get up to a stable level, seventeen and fifteen feet.
And believe it or not, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, because we got so much rain, it created humidity, which, which causes the sand filters to have to be cleaned quicker or exacerbates the, the dirtiness of the sand filters.
Correct.
And to Joe's point too, I mean, it's, it's, since this upgrade, and it's a delicate situation in a certain degree, because New York State does fund a lot of our projects, I understand that. But there was a huge upgrade that they had, giving a lot of money, and we were left with a lot of the issues. That's the way I see it.
So I guess we just need a motion to have Mark craft the local law and schedule a public hearing on the twentieth, to move forward on this.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take care of that for us, Mark?
Yep. Joe, can I also add, if you read down on the bottom where it says no, what we plan on doing is if the tank gets to ten feet, a level of ten feet, for every foot that it drops, we will contact the, the industrial account holders and let them know. Once the tank, if it gets depleted down to six foot, our large users, their flow will be reduced into their plan.
And that's basically because, for two reasons. The DOH wants that to happen, and we've almost got to need to happen.
Correct, because the three million, three million gallon tank supplies hospital.
That's.
So we cannot afford to let it go down below six feet.
Hopefully, we'll all work together, and it'll be fine.
The meeting went good. It's, our meetings that we've had with Craft in the past, since I've been here, have been smooth meetings and yelling. They're receptive to what we say.
Good.
And I would like, I think we're receptive to what they say. So working together, I think, you know, we can, we can correct the issues that are happening and.
They've been here for many years, and I think just because of mutual respect.
Yeah. And, you know, we don't want to see them leave. We're not here to make money off them. We just want to keep them regulated, so everybody in the village has water.
All right. Budget amendments. We have budget, two budget amendments here, it looks like, one for the water fund and one for sewer funds. We have a motion to take care of the water funds, September twenty twenty-one budget amendment modifications.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second, mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have sewer fund budget amendment for September twenty twenty-one. Basically, this is all monies that's going, been transferred to capital for the project.
I'll make that motion for the sewer fund.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-two property exemption questionnaire. I looked over, I don't see any changes. We did make changes last year on the solar section, but other than that, I think everything's, I don't know if anybody's, has any questions on that, or feels they want to make any changes?
I make a motion that we accept that as presented based on it being consistent with last year.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new position to be stated. Deputy clerk treasurer. Basically, and I think some of you who have been on the board remember, a while back, Wendy was both the deputy clerk, and she was also the deputy treasurer. A few years ago, that got changed, and that person that was the deputy treasurer has left, and things never got changed back. So what I'm asking for here tonight is a motion to reapprove Wendy Snowden as deputy clerk treasurer and file a paperwork with the proper authorities.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, you're, you're creating the position. So first, you need to create the position, and then.
My motion is to create the position?
I'll second that.
All in favor for creating the position?
Aye.
Aye.
Then they got a pointer to it.
Should that motion come from the mayor?
Actually, it should come from the clerk.
Yeah, I know yours. You okay with that?
I was gonna say, yeah. Am I supposed to second then?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, you're the one that's got to write it out.
Oh, okay. Then, yeah.
We just got them reversed.
I was like, wait a minute. Okay, so I'll make the motion.
Well, you're, you're asking the board to appoint her.
Oh.
Based on the recommendation of the clerk, I make the motion to appoint Wendy Snowden.
Okay.
I was like, wait, what am I doing? Okay, so wait, so tomorrow I'll have to.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one is to appoint her as of today.
And everybody's in favor.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good. I'll get your signature on that tomorrow.
Okay. Approval of check signers. Well, basically, right now, Pam Rose was approved to sign checks, Wendy Snowden's approved to sign checks, I'm approved to sign checks, but we need a motion to get Danielle St. Louis approved to sign the checks. And we need that motion, basically, because the bank wants something from our benefits stating that we authorize Danielle to get a check signed.
I make the motion to authorize Danielle to be authorized.
St. Louis.
Check signer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We're leaving PMR for the time being.
I think we've already started taking her off of everything.
I'd only been transferring the bank accounts and everything over.
Yeah, we just did all the information for you bank for wires and everything. So I think until I'm officially on, she'll stay on, yeah. And then once I'm fully approved, then she'll be off.
You're replacing.
Yep.
I think like with community bank, I think you just got to go up there and fill out some paperwork.
I think we already took care of that. I think that was all those signatures that we did.
You gotta have something reflecting your minutes.
Yeah, I think we just have to, this'll finalize it.
Here's my question, Mr. Tewel. Do these minutes, does she have to wait till they're approved at the next meeting?
Strangely enough, in municipal law, there is no requirement that minutes ever be approved, because they are the clerk's minutes, not the board's minutes. Now, traditionally, boards approve minutes, but it's not required. As soon as she has the minutes ready, they're ready to go.
I was wondering why the legislature's never approved them. Now I know why.
It just gives us probably the ability to, if there's a mistake, to make a change or whatever.
All right, next is the Lava Fire Department's budget. Anybody have any questions on that? Looks like our share for the coming year is going to be sixty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Nobody has any questions on that? I guess we would need a motion to approve the budget.
So.
Wendy will have to send out the contracts to all the other towns. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go back to our local laws on manufactured homes. We have a motion to close a public hearing on manufactured homes?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have a motion to adapt local law.
Now, before you do that, we have a couple of things to do. First of all, I want to reflect that you did get a letter from the county planning board on this. They found a couple of what I'm going to call grammatical issues with some of the language. That language has been corrected. So the comments set forth in the.
Basically, they changed one word, right?
Well, it was.
Two different.
Two different words, but yes. I think it was a comma, rather. There was a comma and one word, but we made a change. It doesn't change the substance of it anyway, but it's been done. So I wanted, first of all, the minutes. Doesn't change the substance of it anyway, but it's been done. So I wanted, first of all, let's reflect that the change was done. Now, we have to finish the seeker part. You adopted part one seeker a couple of months ago. Now we gotta do part two. Part two, we're assessing impacts from the local law. And we have to decide whether any of these impacts are either known to a small impact or moderate to large impact. That's the basic thing. The first question is, does the proposed, is impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on a physical alteration to any service proposed site. There is no proposed site here, we're just adopting a law. Those will be analyzed on an individual basis when actual applications come in. So I think for right now, the answer to that is no. Does the adoption of the law have an impact on geological features such as the destruction of or inhibiting access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site? And again, the whole site, and no, this, the adoption of the law doesn't. Same with impacts on water, no real impacts on water at this point. Any impacts or maybe down the road will be assessed on a project by project basis. Same with impacts on groundwater, same with impacts on flooding. We also had a question about impacts on air, and again, to be assessed on a case by case basis as things are done. Same with impacts on plants and animals. Same with impact on agricultural resources. And the same with respect to the impact on aesthetic resources and historic or archaeological resources. It's fairly common when you're adopting a law like this that there's no significant impact environmentally from simply adopting a law. Impact on open space and recreation, again, will not cause the creation of critical environmental areas, defined under the environmental conservation regulations. No impact on transportation, energy, noise or light. I think you're going to be good on all these, but let's get through them. Human health, again, would be assessed on a case by case basis. Then there's a question see about whether it is or is not consistent with your land use plans. And I would say it is consistent, that's why you're doing it, right? So there's no adverse impact to that. Then it asks whether or not the project is consistent with the existing community character. And I think again, you would answer that it is consistent. So there's no negative impact on the community character. Based on those answers, you then have to consider whether or not Sorry, just cut you off there. So you have to consider whether the project will result in a significant adverse impact on the environment or no significant adverse impact on the environment. Which do you feel is appropriate? I would say based on the answers, it's probably no significant adverse impact. And based on that, I would ask the board to consider making what we call a negative declaration, basically indicating that the project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment and therefore an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. And that would be your motion.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, you move the side, this one.
Okay.
Okay. And then you just keep that in the file.
Okay.
So now you can move on to adopting the law.
Okay, can we have a motion to adopt the local law for smoke shops?
For manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes.
Oh, wait, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the local law.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Mayor, if there's no further comments or comments to be made on the tobacco's law, I'll make a motion if we close the public hearing on that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We probably have to do one, or do one that one.
Again, I'm gonna reflect, we did get a letter from the county planning board. They had no comments against us, so they took the action to approve. We do have seeker to go through again, so I think we're gonna find the answers here to be much like before. No impact on land, again, would be assessed on a, as we call law. No impact on geological features or surface water, groundwater, flooding. No impacts on air or plants or animals. Nothing on agri sources. Doesn't affect aesthetic resources, historical or archaeological resources. Does not impact open space or recreation, will not cause the creation of a critical environmental carryout. No impact on transportation or energy, no impact on noise or light. Impact on human health, but I suppose there could be an impact on human health, but I suppose it's positive. So I'm going to say there's no significant negative impact there. And then there's a question about whether it is consistent with community plans. And I'm assuming you feel it is consistent with community plans, so no negative impact on those. And you feel there's any, maybe any negative impact on community character as a result of this? Assuming the answer there is also no. Which then gets us down to part three, which is making an environmental determination. And in this case, again, where we asked the question whether we think there is going to be a significant detrimental environmental impact. If you feel there is none, then you would, or that there are no significant adverse impacts, I would ask for a motion to make a negative declaration.
Okay, can we have a motion for a negative declaration?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you would do the doubt.
I will give you that.
Now, take the motion to
So moved. So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, correspondence, Lewis County Planning Community Development, resuming tax amendment to manufactured homes.
We already went over that.
Same with the
Same with the tobacco.
Down on the sea. Down on the sea.
Down on the sea.
Third one down.
Yeah. This one's Lewis County Planning Community Development. Our site plan review for groundwater project was approved. Any questions on that? Correspondence from Lewis County, FFW. I know Pam sent this out to everybody in email, so they have it. It was basically as an invite to the nine eleven ceremony last Saturday.
From what I saw on next video, it feels nice. That is very appropriate.
And New York State Division of Budget, AFPA, for his local fiscal recovery. Basically, that's a, a letter telling us, we're getting an additional one thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. This will bring our total allocation up to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Which was every little bit help in these days. River Area Council, anybody's got any questions on that? Nikki's right here.
Just a meeting coming up, right? September twenty?
Yeah.
First.
Yeah, September twenty-first will be a Ray, Ray Guy Board meeting at six o'clock. It'll be a Zoom. And then there is a Tugel Commissioner meeting on the twentieth for the Tugel Commission, but we invite usually a ref to meet, Chicago, community members, attend, and then we're doing lunch at Zero Dock Street afterwards. I will mention though that the annual Tugel Commission meeting will be on October fourteenth at the Taylor Water Lodge.
Lawwell Fire Department's got a new member, and they'd like us to. The new member's name is Jacob Thomas. Basically, they're submitting his name for board approval, so we need a motion to approve Jacob Thomas in the Lawwell Fire Department.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Officers' committee reports, for his attorney.
Not, not particularly. There was a one just laid an effort going in to readdress New York's rules about remote attendance of meetings and virtual attendance and so on. Under the open meetings laws that exist now, it's very difficult to do so, especially since the emergency powers have gone away. But with COVID cases rising, I think there's more pressure to readdress that. Plus, I think a lot of people felt, you know, our technology's different than when that law was first adopted, and it's easier to do virtual meetings. I'm going to attend a seminar on that at the end of this month, and I'll have a little more information, but nothing will happen with respect to it unless until the state legislature decides to act on it. So it's nothing that's going to happen immediately. But just so you know, there is some movement there. Where it becomes particularly important, I think, is with communities that have a seasonal population. Maybe they have board members that go south in the winter, whether it's on their planning board, zoning board, and we see that in a lot of the waterfront communities. You know, people who really want to be involved, but they're not gonna be there, you know, December, January, September, March. If they can attend remotely and still be a factor board member, I think it helps those boards to recruit and maintain their membership. Right now, that's not a possibility.
See, the only thing I have is, we have in the past, we said we ordered some new pole lights for the poles for Christmas time. They did arrive, now in storage. We have eight brand new lights that'll be on the poles for Christmas. We should have a new Christmas tree, hopefully by the end of October, and a park up there to be able to be decorated, so that's moving forward also. I don't know, Danielle, if you've got anything, right?
Uh, the new fountain's in.
Really? You're still my father.
I was leaving out that.
Oh, sorry. That was like a huge thing this past week. Okay, I have a million things on that.
Well, now Paul, excuse me.
So the new fountain is in, it'll be in, hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll have it up. We are contracting with TF Wright to install it. It is a granite fountain.
Why don't you install it?
We're, right now, we're waiting for the pump and some internal stuff to come. The fiberglass basin came and it was cracked or whatever. They're going good, we're getting a new one. So once that gets here, I'm gonna have the guys go up and set it in, get everything in place, and when the pump comes, then we'll get it installed, and it should look nice. It'll have LED lights on the inside of the basin, so it'll be lit up, whole fountain will be lit up. And Joe and I have some other ideas to light the, light the park up some more, so hopefully when it's done, everybody be happy.
Thanks for your report, Danielle.
Thanks, Paul.
Check that off my list.
That was like the biggest talk in my office all week, so that was my news to share.
Do you have anything, Randy?
You've got my monthly report, nothing else at this point.
You gonna bring that issue up tonight or not?
I was gonna.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sure you must have I have, I have a few things. The fountain's in. Let's see. Bastwick Street has been striped. I've never noticed. Yeah. State Street by the Commons, where we had talked a few months ago, where I put up some do not enter signs, has been striped by the DOT. Hopefully, it'll deter people from pulling in there, pulling into the center lane. I guess we'll wait and see. I do have a couple of vehicles I'd like to put into surplus. We have a two thousand seventeen International four forty Sander. We've had issues in the past with it. So I'd like to put that in surplus, and we also have a nineteen ninety-six Volvo dump truck I would like to put in surplus. The reason I'm doing that is, I would like the board's approval. The town of Martinsburg is selling their two thousand seven International fifty-six hundred dump truck, which is also a Sander. We've been up, we've, we've looked at it. We believe that the one, the dump truck will basically take care of getting rid of the Volvo and the Sander that we have now. The dump truck is in excellent condition. They would like to sell it to us for sixty-five thousand. I believe we can recoup that money off the two items that I would like surplus, and I think we would be in a lot better shape with that one dump truck. So I'd like to get the board's approval to put those two as surplus. Put them up for option.
I'll make that as a motion to be.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would need approval on spending sixty-five thousand for the two thousand seven International dump truck and Sander combination.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One thing about this truck that Paul's looking at, I know I've talked to different ones. We had Alzer, working for the village, he also works part-time for, he lives up Martinsburg, and he's drove that truck quite a bit, and he said it's really good shape. But the other thing is, even though it's a Sander, it wasn't used much in the wintertime. Most of the miles of it were put on it with all dirt, stone, sand, and summer dye. Very seldom was it used, it was like a backup truck for him in the winter, so.
With the issues that we've had with our, with our two thousand seventeen Sander, I think we'd be moneyhead to, to go this way. It's, it's gonna save us in the long run for a number of reasons. And we also have
We still have our
We still have our old Sander, which still works very well.
Matter of fact, we use that a lot like old, but the other one is now.
Yes. Yes. That's all I have.
Anything on your paving or?
Oh, yeah. Um, there, it was here yesterday, they started paving Fairview and part of DeWitt Summit. They told me they weren't going to be here today due to the rain, but they will be back for the rest of the week. And they will, we will be paving, we'll be completing Summit, DeWitt, Forest, Jefferson, Lampley.
James.
James, and Rare Road and River Street. So there's a lot of paving going on. As you're aware, I get X amount of dollars in CHIPS money every year, so I think it's a good idea. If we continue doing this with the CHIPS money, I don't want to say it's a Band-Aid, but for us to reconstruct any of our roads is more than we could afford. So I think resurfacing them will give us six, 10 years per road. And hopefully, I've got a couple of projects for next year. Jackson Street being one that the village, we are going to put drainage in. Most of our streets, or I shouldn't say most of them, a lot of our streets, they don't have good drainage. And that's the reason roads deteriorate so fast. So if I can each year do a couple of roads, put catch bases in, get the water to run where it should be, our blacktop should last, or our roads should last a lot longer. So that's, that's my plan.
Capital Future Planning, anything?
Uh, nothing.
Personnel?
I'd like to request a executive session to discuss a contract issue. And I'm going to request that the attorney and our clerks stay, but Randy and Paul can be discussed.
Can I ask you, Dan, be more specific? What, what gets us into executive session?
Discussing wages and.
Of an individual?
Collective bargaining.
Oh, collective bargaining. Collective bargaining, so we just call it executive session.
Did you have anything for personnel, Randy?
Uh, I don't know.
That you'd want an executive session?
I guess we could follow up.
I mean, then we can go into what.
We can do that, we can have Randy, then when Randy's down, we can, we can take the night off.
I questioned a little bit, that's why I wanted Randy.
Might be the same thing.
Okay, and that's. My hands, anything?
I didn't get a chance to do the audit or the vouchers today, finishing up some work on my mother's house. But I'll be in tomorrow for the vote.
I have an audit coming already.
Or your judges.
Okay, Fire Department, anything?
Uh, Fire Department, the last meeting that I attended in the end of August, we had Felipe insurance, or Felipe, auditors were there, I brought back the audit summary for anybody that wants to review it, decide to apply to you with us. There was a few other things discussed that right now I'm waiting to bring up further. On some issues maybe with another fire department, but I'll leave that alone for now. That's my report, my fire department.
Police Department, anything?
Uh, yeah. First, all I've noticed on your report here, Randy, is a large amount of traffic tickets this month, which is good. Keep up the good work. And we had a conversation today, and I think Dan was involved in some of it too, about dog control on the village. I'd just like to discuss that a little bit. And that's why this little sideline is on here about complaints affecting, you know, for dog control. It's my understanding that we are utilizing the town's dog control officer? Because of the village being in the town, but we don't, we don't provide any funding towards that?
No. But they get all the funding from the dog licensing and everything that are for village dogs and things.
Well, it's my understanding that there's been some issues, am I correct, Dan, or not?
While discussing with Randy, we've got a few issues. We don't, I guess I'll say it politically correctly as I can, we don't feel that we're getting satisfactory coverage, number one. Number two, our dog law is different than the town's dog law, which creates issue for the enforcing officer. Our dog law being more restrictive than the Ags and Markets Law. And in discussing with Randy, I for one feel that maybe we should, this has gone on for 20 years and we have felt that the county should have animal control. That being said, there is no animal control. We have, I, I see dogs running loose in the village and I'm very concerned with, with kids out. I'm aware of a dog bite over the weekend, that this all happened after I discussed this with Randy. I don't think the dog was loose, but it just creates its own issues. And Randy and I were talking, we thought that we could possibly hire our own and that we would be able to collect the fines, I would assume. Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Gable, but I think it's come to the point where we have our own dog control officer, or if not that, the town and the village need to have the law be consistent with Sander. So I, I think tonight, what I would suggest, Jim, maybe, maybe you would agree, apparently Randy's tossed some discussion with you, that we look into this further and maybe come back with something more concrete in our October meeting. But I think it's, it's becoming an issue that we've got to address.
I agree with you, I mean, I, I had an issue while working at the code department with dog control at one time. I don't even remember what it was, but the current dog control officer, basically, I don't want to say he did nothing, but he did nothing. I'm sorry. So I, I do think we need somebody or a combined law that, that makes sense. I mean, this law, when it talks about definitions, you know, talks about the dog control officer, but then under enforcement, it also says, you know, can be enforced by the dog control officer, peace officer, or police officer. But I don't feel that our police officers, I mean, they don't have cages for the dogs in. They don't have the proper equipment or training to do dog control. I think we need somebody specific for dog control, and you're right, Dan, I don't think we're getting that right now.
And in an emergency issue, I think that our police department probably has to respond for the safety of, of somebody. And I know years ago, that was the mayor, we had an unruly, what did they call it, unruly cat. One of our officers nicely took, nicely or not nicely took care of it, which in turn developed the Humane Society. It was born out of that whole issue. We can't have, I'm not going to pick on a specific breed, but we cannot have any large dog running around freeing a village that's aggressive, that could hurt somebody seriously. And I'm aware of an issue Saturday where a girl was bitten in the face and was treated in the ER. And I don't know if it's being handled through public health, I didn't look into it, I was made aware of it. That helped us. We had an issue a few years ago, I think Mr. Gable prosecuted the case where a dog bit several people in the village. We kind of sat on maybe being remiss on this issue, and I don't think we can be remiss any longer. So I'd be happy to in the next 30 days with Randy, Tim, or whatever they want to do unless there's something going.
Yeah, we can work on it.
I just got a question from Mark, might be able to answer. We're in the process of combining our, sending our village court stuff to the town. My question is, say the village was to subcontract to a person to be the dog control officer, and they issue fines and whatnot. How do we, how can we handle the fines?
You mean, who gets the fines?
They, they would have to pay their fines like directly to the village, definitely.
Well, they pay their fines to the town, they pay the court, but then the question is, does it want to get dispersed back to the town?
Would the town have to?
It's not a village violation, a local village law violation, I believe you get fined.
The reason I say that, there is people out there that would subcontract.
Well, to, to do dog.
Yes.
Well, then you're lucky, because a few years ago, nobody could find.
Well, Randy and I were talking just last week about one or something. Which I would, as a board, would have.
Be nauseous about what the requirements are for a dog control officer.
Well, this person already is a dog control officer for another town?
Uh, you know, the last time I was involved with this had to be before five years ago. Towns, particularly up on the hill, were doing inter municipal agreements to collectively hire a single dog control officer to cover several towns. And there were discussions about making laws consistently between the towns to do that. So the dog control officer didn't have to, you know, stop and brief the law enough to, you know.
But that's all we could look into too, with the, with the town law, do something with that control officer. I was just curious if, you know, were the fines then?
Yeah, well, I mean.
If we hired somebody out of.
But my guess is you're not getting a lot of fines. Because most of it's going to happen if you have active enforcement.
Thirty-five this year.
Drive, well, that's about a year and a half.
About a year and a half in this, yes, 120.
But I mean, with active enforcement, people would tend to keep their dogs at home. Because they, they know they're going to get caught. And most things are barking dogs and it's dogs at large. There's not, fortunately, a lot of cases where people are hurt, although that does occur. But, you know, the dog control officer, if they're active, will make people more responsible.
Well, last time we had, you tried actually, an off-duty state trooper was off-jogging, was one of the victims.
I recall.
And I thought they were going to take the bite out of credit.
So you guys will get together and just discuss that?
Yeah, we will.
Anything on Planning Board, Drilling Board?
Uh, I had to contract a plan that, September 1st, had to have actually an in-person meeting. Nikki assisted with that. It basically had to do with the town's land usage policies. This first Wednesday of October, wherever that falls, will be the village's turn. That was pretty, there was no meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
That may be something too, I'm just thinking, if we do combine the town and the village to have a more condensed or whatever law that is uniform, maybe that's something we put in the plan as well, so. Other than that, we're moving on to the village next month. Actually, the process was kind of starting to ramp up a little bit, right?
A little bit, yeah. So Elena's on vacation right now for a couple of weeks, so I'll probably hear a little bit more when she gets back. And piles everything that we did at that meeting, basically had everybody go through and document different things that they would like to see.
Yep.
Any more from the municipal board or?
Last night, one of the major topics was that industrial surcharge. Went a little longer than what everybody thought it was going to last night. Was a 15-minute meeting.
Anything from the town?
No.
Tony?
Paul and Joe went to the meeting in West Lydon, and the issue of the water study was not brought up. I was made aware this morning, and it appears that the Martinsburg's meeting tonight, there may be somebody from the county going there to give some presentations.
No, it's actually the engineering firm. They will be at the county tonight. Tomorrow, they are coming to the town of Flawless meeting to give a presentation.
Okay. And that's maybe something we should reach out to, or? What time is that maybe?
Nine thirty, that's a regular time.
Nine thirty.
I think it's nine o'clock.
Will they move it up to nine? Say it used to be at nine thirty.
I got a dentist appointment at nine o'clock, so I'm going to try to book into Zoom, keep us all at the dentist. Okay, that's all I have on the call.
Anything on recreation?
I just talked to Dan Myers, who said he will get us an end-of-year report. Everything, the numbers are a little bit, there was still some restrictions of the school capacity or what have you there. The numbers were a little bit restrictive, I think we could have had a few more kids involved, but in general, everything went really well.
I have a very happy grandson, he enjoyed it immensely.
I think we had Ray Coles report, if there's anything else?
Nope, the only thing I'll add is that we're continuing to work on that Black River Historical Floating Museum thing. Fore Drum Interim, go around and meet with people, get information for that. And we are looking at going out on the river prior to the first week of that CORE DMO to map out the navigation hazards as well as any of the historical sites on there.
Great, bring us down to public comment, anybody have any public comment? I guess we need a motion, we go into executive session.
Motion to adjourn the usual, general meeting, and go into executive session.
I'll second.
Call of favor?
Aye.